That's good.
Can we not change the walls?
Okay. You know, two by four now is like eighty dollars.
Yeah.
Feeling strong?
I mean, so, yeah, we're closing up.
Good evening. I'll call the regular city council meeting of the City of Columbia to order. Can I get a roll call?
Niemitz?
Here.
Wrestler? Hook? Holt Camp?
Here.
Martins?
Here.
Riddle?
Here.
Garmer?
Here.
Cory?
Here.
Let's get everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we'd like to recognize a couple employees on their retirement. The first one is Steve Miller and Jackie Hausman. Steve Miller worked for the City of Columbia Department of Public Works for 37 years, and Jackie Hausman has worked in administrative department for 15 years. Both of these individuals have made significant contributions to the city in their respective areas, and on behalf of the City of Columbia, please accept these tokens of gratitude with our appreciation, and I'll have you guys come up one by one. So, Steve?
Love your band, Steve. Love your band. Steve Miller Band, awesome.
Thank you, appreciate your service.
Want Janet to come up?
Do they have any speeches?
Also, we want to recognize that May 9th through the 15th was National Police Week. In 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day in a calendar week in which May 15th falls. This National Police Week was established by Joint Resolution of Congress in 1962. National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. Accordingly, we take this moment to thank all law enforcement officials for the work they do to keep our communities safe. And also, this week is EMS Week. So with this, I'll be reading a proclamation for our emergency medical service. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the emergency, members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness and injury. Whereas the emergency medical services system consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others. Whereas the members of emergency medical services team, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. Whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Therefore, I, Bob Hill, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Columbia, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the week of May 16th through the 22nd, 2021, as Emergency Medical Services Week. Do I have any input from the public? If so, if you would step forward to the microphone.
Comments were received.
Any comments and announcements from the aldermen?
Aye. Thank you, guys. Thank you, thank you. Happy retirement.
See ya.
Any comments and announcements from our department directors?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. The 16th through 22nd is also Public Works Week, too, so.
Okay, alright.
A couple of things that weren't in my report, just to update the council on. Creekside Park, I mean, as you know, we had a DNR grant, and probably four or five months ago, we put it on pause due to a lot of COVID-related issues and things. We tried to reduce scope. Well, DNR won't let us do a reduced scope, so we will have to withdraw that grant. So we'll need to put together a letter and send it to them. By doing that, it will make us eligible for this upcoming cycle. We won't be put on the naughty list, but we need to go ahead and do that. And again, it's unfortunate, but there was a lot of things stacked against us back in October. A lot of things had to fall together to make it work, and it just wasn't worth the risk. And they gave us the opportunity to reduce scope, but what they didn't tell you was that if you removed any recreational component from your grant, you weren't going to be eligible because your score changed. Well, we weren't in a position to be able to have that flexibility. Just for context, if we had a program where we were doing something in the same Beaumont Shu Crap Park, and we were doing a pavilion, a playground, and let's say a restroom, and that was it, you know, Creekside had a lot of support infrastructure, roads, parking, lots of things of that nature, but let's say we were just focusing on those three things. We could have pulled the restroom out because it's a support, it's not recreational, and they would have said, "Go ahead and do it. You can do it at the smaller scope." But our project unfortunately wasn't in that position, so we will have to withdraw that grant, which is the second one I've done since I've been here, but we'll get it figured out. The other thing is, Mayor Hill, Administrator Brim, and myself, was that the, well, we did the Illinois TPC meeting virtually, and our Phase Two of Gent Road grant was recommended for funding, which is $552,000, so we will get that, so. But I just wanted to give you guys an update.
Fantastic.
Thanks, Chris. Go on to the consent agenda.
There are six items on the consent agenda. The first is a motion to approve minutes of the April 12, 2021 Committee of the Hole Meeting. The second item is the motion to approve minutes of the May 3, 2021 Regular City Council Meeting, First Session. The third item is a motion to approve minutes of the May 3, 2021 Regular City Council Meeting, Second Session. The fourth item is a motion to approve payment of vouchers for the period of May 1, 2021 through May 14, 2021, totaling $610,000, $10.36. The fifth item is a motion to approve the special event permit for Fourth of July celebration. And the last in the sixth item is the motion to approve special event permit for festival, which is October 3, 2021.
Are there any items, aldermen, that you would wish to pull from the consent agenda?
I have something, Bob. I just wanted to say that on. Number three, the second session from May 3, it's got a roll call of the previous alderman instead of Paul and myself, so just wanted to note that that part was needing to be changed.
We will have that amended for the official record, so we can go ahead and approve it tonight, and if we can just say with item three amended as noted.
Can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second? Roll call. Niemitz?
Yes.
Wrestler? Hook? Holt Camp?
Yes.
Martins?
Yes.
Riddle? Garmer?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Excuse me, unfinished business. Ordinance number 3571 annexing into the City of Columbia, Illinois, certain property owned by the city which contains 1.54 acre, more or less, located at 2,000 Columbia Quarry Road, and zoning said property A1 Agriculture District.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This item is pretty straightforward. It came up a while ago when I was looking at the, doing some research on city properties as far as annexation, and I realized that that was our, the little notch that was in the zoning map was our city water tank, and I wondered why it wasn't annexed yet, so. Turns out that it indeed was not, had not been annexed. So essentially, this is just a, kind of a cleanup item on our city limits, and we've taken the action as advised by City Attorney Brockert pertaining to requirements for annexing city-owned property into the city, which unlike other annexations, there are no public notice requirements or public hearing requirements since we already own the property. So, pretty straightforward, but I'd be happy to stand and answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
Hey, Scott, I'm sorry, I got a question. You knew that was going to happen, didn't you? I was just curious, the surrounding is A1 as well, right? The surrounding tracks?
It is not. This had to be A1 because by state statute, you bring it in at the, at the most restrictive zoning district where residential is allowed. And by this, this would, it would also be the least, the least, the most restrictive where this use is allowed to, and in this case, it's A1.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Yep, can we get a motion to ordinance number 3571?
Martins?
I'll second.
Garmer? Roll call. Niemitz?
Yes.
Wrestler? Hook? Holt Camp?
Yes.
Martins?
Yes.
Riddle? Garmer?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Next item is new business. Discussion of Tourism Grant Application for Songs for Soldiers.
So I can share a little information with you, some background on tourism funds and the local tourism grant program. So tourism funds are received by the city from overnight stays, from people who are staying at hotels located within the city. Basically, that's the Hampton Inn. And according to state statute, those funds can be expended by the city solely to promote tourism and conventions within the city or otherwise attract non-resident overnight visitors to the city. So in March of 2020, we implemented the local tourism grant program, and that provides a structured and a transparent way for our nonprofit organizations, our venues, our hotels, to apply for and receive those hotel motel tax funds that can in turn be used to promote events that bring in visitors to the city and would stay overnight and then keep that cycle going of hotel motel tax dollars. So we've received our first application from Songs for Soldiers, and according to the procedure that we established last year, the application was reviewed by the Tourism Advisory Committee, and in that review, what, what happens is they score a rubric. That rubric is based on completeness of application, the ability for the event to grow successfully in the future, economic opportunities the event presents to our community, whether or not the event will reflect positively on the city and its tourism efforts, the potential for overnight visitors, if the funding is, if the funding request is consistent with how it will be used, and then post-event reporting. We couldn't score on post-event reporting because we, this is our first application. So following the review and according to the procedure, the committee recommended approval to the Finance Director, who confirmed that there are funds available to, to grant this request. And now we're asking for your review and comment prior to bringing back a resolution to approve the request and the grant agreement at the June 7 meeting. So do you have any questions?
I saw they scored a 61 out of 63. Were you anticipating it'd be that high? That seems pretty high.
Yeah, well, they plan to bring in probably 35 rooms, which is about half of the hotel occupancy.
Right.
So, so, yeah, I, you know, I, and 8,000 to 10,000 people who will generate some income within the city, so definitely.
And the last one was 16? I think I saw 16 nights or something like that? The previous Songs for Soldiers? I thought I saw that number.
16 nights that they, that the people had stayed?
Yeah.
No, I think that was just for the, the people that are working for, like the band.
In 2019, they booked 16 rooms for the band, and an additional 10-room block for guests was used. They anticipate at least this many rooms for '21, but should be considerably more this year.
And I think it was probably more than 10, but it's hard for them to judge what's, you know, what is going to Songs for Soldiers and what's not unless they ask each guest. Any questions, concerns?
I just would like you to let them know how much the grant is, the dollar.
Yes, the grant is, they are requesting $2,500, which is the, the top end of the line, so they can't request any more than that. So that can be requested three times a year if they were to hold another event. So.
Come, Mary Ellen.
Since this is early, can they track it now, since we have joined this program last in 2020? Can the hotel, is it, is it, would it be our place to request that the hotel track? What would be for Songs for Soldiers that way when they apply? If they apply again, there's more strength in that grant with the data that's provided? I don't know whose place it would be to do that.
So that is the responsibility of Songs for Soldiers in their post-event reporting.
Okay.
So they need to get back to us, you know, how many rooms were reserved.
Right, and they would have to work that out then between them and the hotel as far as tracking.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Kelly.
I think it's wrong, there were, there's supposed to be something on their advertising mentioning.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, so the requirement is that they have, in their advertising, they have to have the hotel logo in all of their print advertising. So not necessarily the city logo, but, but the hotel logo, just so that we can make sure that people know that there's a hotel here, and they can book rooms, and then we can generate more tax.
Any other questions, comments?
We'll have the ordinance for the June 7 meeting.
Thanks, Sue.
Resolution.
Next item for new business is the discussion of a plat, of survey and land transfer by way of real estate exchange between parcel number 04-22-102-024-000 and parcel number 04-22-102-029-000, located in the City of Columbia, Mano County, Illinois.
Good evening again. We received a request from Jim Vogt on behalf of his clients Bruce and Kathy Robert, and they've submitted the request. You have the supporting information on the agenda item that shows they're asking to transfer a portion of one parcel they own over to the, another parcel they own, which are directly adjacent to one another. And upon review, this is in the R6 district, upon review both lots and all the development, well, there's no proposed development at this point. It's already has a detached garage on it, but everything has been reviewed and found to comply with applicable provisions of the zoning code as well as the subdivision code. At this time, per the norm, we're just presenting it for, for discussion, and based on discussion, we'll follow up and for approval at the June 7 council meeting. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Do we know why? I'm just curious. I was reading, I could not find the reason.
That's what I was going to ask, too.
Because the, my understanding is they don't want the detached garage that they built going with the property who's, which lot it's on. They want it to be with their home instead.
Van Cave, probably. Got it.
Any other questions, comments?
We'll bring the ordinance back at the next meeting, then.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next item for new business is discussion of street closures as we go into IDPH Bridge Phase Five.
I'll take this one, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Resolution was adopted by the City Council, June of 2020, which provided for temporary outdoor seating for dining and drinking establishments located within the city. Furthermore, that resolution gave staff the authority to approve temporary street closures to facilitate the outdoor dining. That was originally intended to go through Phase Three of the Restore Illinois Plan. Council did authorize the extension of that authority and those activities through Phase Four of the Restore Illinois Plan at the August 3, 2020 City Council Meeting. The Illinois Department of Public Health has recently transitioned the entire state into the bridge to Phase Five. As such, the temporary authority passed under Resolution 2020-12 has lapsed. We are simply trying to start a discussion with the council, seeking direction on if that's something that the council would like to continue, in which case, if it would be that direction, I think it would be advisable that Mr. Dunneke and I would work to amend the ordinance pertaining to the zoning for outdoor dining, which would have to go through the Plan Commission and ultimately back to the council for recommendation. Or we can let the authority expire, and it will be a business as usual pre-pandemic.
I would throw in that if.
Please.
There is a possibility we could do a third option, and that would be just a temporary permit as well, such as we're doing, but extended up.
Any questions or discussion on, yeah, Mary Ellen?
Well, things seem very transitional now to make a, you know, a lasting decision on this. Doesn't it seem like we're still, everything is still kind of transitional? Because there, if you, if you, when you read the, when you read it, you realize how many, there's so many, so many restrictions in there, so many things that had to be set up according to state regulations. So just to, just to review it, you know, in my mind, there were so many items that almost needed to be struck if things proceed as they are, and then as soon as they change to the next, the next stage, then that'll all change, too. So this seems like a moving target to me in a way. That's just one thing about the timing.
And that's really been kind of the whole, you know, phase of the Restore Illinois Plan. You know, for a while, we were in Phase Four, then we backslid into Phase Three B. It's been kind of a moving target, so that's why I think it is kind of difficult to know the best way to proceed with this, but really just trying to look for the conversation. Do we want to extend it, you know, maybe for a 90-day period, you know, temporarily? See where we're at in the Restore Illinois Plan at that time.
In some respects, just to help, I know those businesses had struggling year last year. Just to help them, if, if, if we can simply extend it, have there been, first of all, how much utilization was there, and have there been any problems doing this?
There's been three requested street closures, one of which is, well, one of which was scheduled for last week but had to be rescheduled due to the rain, and it's been rescheduled for the 22nd.
There were three, okay.
And then two by a different restaurant for that. And then we had one restaurant actually, well, initially, there were two, but now we, there's, we still only have one that's actually utilizing part of their parking lot for hours. So it wasn't very extensively used, and I might clarify one thing. Alderman Niemitz is, all the guidelines and everything that we attached to the application were simply, those weren't requirements that were tied to the approval. That was the, the guidance that was issued by the state regarding, more for best practices, et cetera, for, for operating under those conditions. There was never any requirements or new barriers or regulations tied to that ordinance, just for clarification.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments?
So if these aren't extended, right, and we let them expire, and we continue on in the way we are now, then we can't have outside dining for those restaurants, right?
Correct.
No, that's not.
That's not good.
Well.
They couldn't use their parking lot for the dining, is what they couldn't use. They could still have.
The temporary ones.
Yeah, they couldn't, what, what the, what the resolution did was allow them to, to use their parking, their off-street parking for seating purposes.
retrofit.
Right. But no, the outdoor dining that was already in place pre-pandemic would be allowed to continue.
Absolutely.
It'd probably, I think it'd probably be a mistake to let that lapse because we don't know what's going to happen.
I agree.
You know, I mean, it could be something else after this. What, I mean, who knows? We didn't see this coming, right?
Heaven forbid, but it very well could be, yes.
COVID-3 or whatever they're saying.
Well, and should that happen, we've got the resolution in already written. It just.
Exactly.
It would be a matter of changing the dates. We approved that in, what, 48 hours?
Right.
Yeah, we did.
So we could, it would be a lot easier than that, maybe 15 minutes just to change the dates and get it back in front of you if that were to happen.
How did you guys decide on the original set of dates, again?
It was based off of the Restore Illinois Plan that was in place at the time.
Off of what they said.
Correct.
And then so how would we come up with new dates for?
The dates were not set.
Right.
It was the phase.
Based off of the phase.
It was the phase.
Tied to the phase?
Correct.
Okay. That seems like a better way anyway, because then you're in sync with the governor.
But we didn't have the bridge when we did this, so it expired at the end of four, which was last, last week, so.
And just to be clear, even though it's expired, we haven't forced anybody to alter any kind of arrangements that they're currently utilizing.
Okay. I think that if we have a chance to let the businesses make some extra money, have some extra people in there, we should, we should allow it.
Extend it.
I don't know if we have to make a motion or something to allow that or, or what we have to do, but anybody that can, you know, keep going on their business will help.
Yeah, because a lot of those folks made investments to comply with that and make some money.
Exactly.
So if they get shut down, then, you know, heat lamps and extra tables and stuff.
That's just out the door.
Yep.
So, so, yeah.
I think if we want, we can probably entertain a motion to approve the extension of the authority granted under Resolution 2020-12 for a period of 60 days.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Sure.
Your motion? We can make it or second it, whichever.
Jay? Is there a second? Cory seconds. Roll call. Niemitz?
Yes.
Wrestler? Hook? Holt Camp?
Yes.
Martins?
Yes.
Riddle?
Yes.
Garmer?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
That was for Resolution 2020-12, correct?
Sending that, correct.
Next item for new business is discussion of City Council Committee Structure.
I'll take that one as well, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Brim?
As noted in the agenda item report for this particular item, the committees that are set by code for the City Council include eight separate committees in addition to the Committee of the Hole. The Committee of the Hole has, was established, I believe, back in 2017 in 2.02.060D of the city code, and that has been utilized in lieu of many of these individual committees in the recent past. The history that was explained to me was that the individual committees would meet from time to time. However, at those meetings, the entire council would essentially attend regardless. So essentially, it was thought that it would be more productive to move that into the true Committee of the Whole structure. Additionally, if you look at the section, the 2.02.060 that establishes the committees, the responsibilities of those committees were actually established back in 1990. As such, that operation really does not reflect the current structure of the city's organization. I think it would be our recommendation that all committees, with the exception of the Committee of the Whole, be abolished. It is important to note that under 2.02.070 of the city code, the mayor reserves the authority to appoint such special committees as he may deem necessary or as may be directed by the council. By keeping this in the city code, that would enable the council to form committees as needed to review items requiring special consideration. One such example that might spring to mind would be as we're reviewing the public safety complex. As we need to go through, look at the different options, it might be more beneficial for Mayor Hill to have the authority to appoint three to four aldermen to serve on a special committee that would then work with staff to make a recommendation to the council as a whole on how to proceed with that.
Have any questions or comments regarding that?
I do.
Yes, sir.
So I had a couple of questions. So you're saying those eight committees there, they're either obsolete, possibly mistitled, et cetera. It could be five committees there applicable now, basically, something like that.
In 2017, to kind of put it in perspective, Mr. Garmer, I believe prior to 2017, there were 15 to 16 council committees that were in place at that time. Similar situation, they weren't utilized. The decision was then made to pare it down to the eight that you see before you this evening. However, by moving to that Committee of the Whole structure, it has really rendered those essentially without function. Additionally, back in 1990, that was really before the advent of professional staff within the City of Columbia. So you'll notice the duties and responsibilities really is performed by the department heads at this time with regards to those specific areas.
And so then, .070 was set up to fill in the gaps at the time where .060, we didn't cover it. But now, going forward, you're proposing that .070 would handle everything.
The Committee of the Whole would remain in place where, you know, if it's a situation as we experienced this past April, to review the budget outside of a regular council meeting, the Committee of the Whole can convene to go through something requiring a little bit more detail and discussion than would appear on the traditional council docket for consideration. But yes, the, the mayor would reserve the right under .070 to convene special committees as needed. Like I said, for example, the public safety complex, I think that would be an appropriate use for one of those subcommittees, if you will.
And then I guess lastly, what's the advantage of cleaning that code up, cleaning the code up?
Cleaning the code up, yes, sir.
That's, that's the advantage there.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Mary Ellen? Yes, Mary Ellen.
Just two things that come to mind is with the Committee of the Whole, though, I would hope that, I would hope that there would be more discussion on items than, than really where, you know, we have the consent agenda, we roll through six or eight items or whatever in a hurry, and we do have all the packet information to study. Not a lot of time to ask questions before the meeting because it comes out on Friday, and we meet on Monday, and if people are working on Monday, that's kind of difficult to contact staff with questions. That would be the only thing is I don't want to roll through, in the past, we've had a lot of discussion, good discussion on, on many items, and sometimes it just takes questions and discussions to hammer it out, you know, to figure out all the details. And again, we have excellent staff to do that, but ultimately, we have to vote. And if we don't completely understand it, then sometimes I, you know, I'm hesitant to, to make a solid vote on it. If I don't, I don't want to discuss things too much. But the only thing I don't want to lose, Doug, is that ability and mayor to, to have that Committee of the Whole discussion. I don't want to act, when, when it's time to have one, that maybe we need more discussion. I don't want it to seem like it's an imposition to, to hold that committee meeting and have everyone attend. That, that's my, that's, I think, my biggest fear, but that's a bit out of habit, too. You realize, you know, 20 years ago, we didn't have staff. So the aldermen really took whatever was closest to their career or their, their field or whatever they did. Well, you know, it'd be applicable for someone to, okay, you take this because you're involved in that with work, so that'll be, probably be the best for you. Now we do have staff to handle it professionally and, and handle it very well. But I just don't, I don't want to lose that interest in that, in that level of discussion with these things and level of understanding, too. That, that, that would be my, that would be my only, my only fear.
And you and I have had the conversation, Mary Ellen, I really feel that by transitioning, the agenda model that you have before you this evening is considerably different than the model that was in place back in 2019, the end of 2019. That was a situation where the City Council would convene the first and third Mondays, and the Committee of Whole, Committee of the Whole, excuse me, met the second and the fourth Monday. You had a situation where, in theory, and I believe this happened on several occasions, something would be introduced at the Committee of the Whole meeting, say on the second Monday of the month, and then the council was immediately the following Monday, on the third Monday, asked to take action on it. By shifting to this model, I really feel that it's kind of slowed that legislative process down intentionally and that the City Council has the opportunity to see items as they appear for the first time under new business on the council agenda for discussion, to ask the questions, comments, concerns. Staff obviously takes note of the different points that are made. We can address that with other parties that are involved. We can incorporate it into the legislation that may be appearing before you in the form of an ordinance or resolution at following meetings. So it's really kind of added an additional week into that process to really give the City Council an opportunity to ask the questions, to connect with staff. That way, you're not forced to act on something that following Monday night, which would be, you know, a week from whenever it was first introduced. This gives you two Mondays in some situations. In other cases, like items that are introduced tonight, if there were a fifth Monday, if you will, in May, it would even be longer before the council would convene again. Now I understand that in certain, certain circumstances, there have been items that have been placed on the agenda that we've asked you to act upon the evening. However, I, I think it's been very rare that items that are not of a routine nature, like your minutes, bills, resolutions, if you will, for things that happen on an annual basis that we're asking you to act upon immediately as soon as it's introduced before you in the evening. Like I said, though, certainly I do see the, the Committee of the Whole still having definite use and applicability in the structure with the example that I gave with the budget. If there are other, you know, significant items, for example, you know, talking about the committees, the reason why I think this is being brought up right now well, as well. We had started the conversation about the recodification where Ecode 360 went through. They put a red line together. My intention was to take the items that the aldermen had questions on to the Committee of the Whole. That way, we weren't bogging down a regular City Council meeting. You would really use that Committee of the Whole as the work session to go through the red line of the city code, but the intention wasn't to go through it line by line. I'm certainly happy to do that if that is the direction from the council, but I was seeking the feedback from the aldermen on the items where they had the most questions. That way, we could really kind of focus those conversations and have a productive and meaningful discussion. So I know it was kind of a long way around to answer your question, but I definitely see value in retaining and utilizing the Committee of the Whole, just not, I think, in the way that it was previously utilized.
I, I appreciate that explanation, and I, I appreciate the fact that everybody could hear that, too, Doug, because I think it's, it's helpful to remember again what the timeline on that would be for introduced items, and then when they would actually be voted on. If it were two weeks later or even be tabled and two more weeks would be added, whatever time would be, then I'm more comfortable with it, too, whatever time would be necessary in order to be, in order to be prepared to make a decision.
Absolutely.
I'll follow up with one. I'm sorry, everybody.
No.
There's, you'll get used to it.
No, go ahead. You're fine.
What I, what I thought was, and probably staff can answer this because you, you see it more in recent years. Do you find that having, did you find, though, that having someone as a chair of a committee, did that make them more attentive, or was it really better to explain to everyone in a meeting rather than have aldermen come in individually and go through, say if, you know, someone was in charge of the, was in charge of the municipal buildings or whatever, that person took a particular interest when, Scott, we were discussing the utilization of our public buildings and things like that? Was it an advantage, or do you really feel that wasn't, again, we've outgrown that? We're, we're at a different, we're at a different stage?
Since you addressed me in particular, I'll go ahead and answer. Are we all okay, or should I be speaking in my microphone?
James, can you hear Scott okay?
Can you hear?
No. Yeah, go ahead and step to.
From my standpoint, since I tend to present things that are a little more difficult to, not quite as straightforward as I think a lot of other departments that, that you might receive information from. A lot of moving pieces, a lot of convoluted law to go through and things like that, a lot of issues. Frankly, I, I find just, you know, the Committee of the Whole structure to, to be more conducive to having a more of a conversation about things and, and opening up to more questions, which sometimes leads to other questions that get answered as well, rather than just having, you know, one or two people sitting in front of you just to go back through it all again the next time, anyway. That, personally, that would be my experience with that.
And essentially, we're kind of utilizing the former Committee of the Whole structure under the new business portion of the regular City Council meetings now. Or at least that was the intention whenever it was first introduced, that this would really be the, the new business would be the area where we would be kind of having those conversations and having those discussions.
Can I just second that? I, I've always wanted to do the Committee as a whole. When I would have the public safety, you know, I, I always didn't feel comfortable. It's, well, let's present this in front of everybody. So like Scott kind of says, you're doing it twice. So I think it's just to have the, everybody as a whole to do it, so, my opinion.
Thank you. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, yes. Chris, do you have similar feelings on this, too? And, and Kim, you, both of you, you all feel pretty much the same way. Linda?
Well, okay, so I, I don't have anything to lose because I'm, I'm, you know, like semi-retired. Nobody's going to, I mean, if they fire me, so, so what? Okay, so, so I really value having Mark Wrestler as the head of the Finance Committee because, you know, there are technical things that come up in accounting, and I can go to him and I can ask him questions. And I, you know, so I rely on him. So I, I don't know if that makes any difference with a, with your, coming to the Committee of the Whole structure, but I do appreciate having Mark Wrestler as, as the chairman of the Finance Committee.
And if I may, I, I think that really kind of goes back to what Mary Ellen had addressed earlier in the evening with regards to the, aldermen were assigned to their committees kind of based off of their professional background or experience. Obviously, Mark is a CPA here in the community. It kind of made sense that he would be the finance chair. I, I don't necessarily see the need, though, for an official finance committee, whenever Linda would still have access to Mark Wrestler and his capacity as a CPA, even though he's not, you know, quote unquote, the chair of a finance committee.
Yeah, I think that my experience with a lot of these committees and other organizations is, some of the committees, because there's eight listed here, let's say, from 1990, some of those committees get hit harder than others, you know what I mean? And you got like one of the committee doing a lot of the work. So those folks may get burnt out, and that's just, you know, one of the side effects of having the committee structure. And then I find also that sometimes the committee comes back to the full board, and the board goes, yeah, sounds good, committee says it's good. And then they don't, you know, necessarily engage completely because the committee said it was okay. Well, maybe eight years are better than three or whatever, you know? So I think it's a good thing. Maybe at the time, this was a good thing, but I also heard, I hear what you're saying, Mary Ellen, about rolling through the stuff real quick. But after hearing Doug's explanation about the gap week, that would allow for, you know, some more concentration or whatever it is we're trying to figure out.
And I definitely don't want to see that I'm discouraging the council from approaching, you know, myself or staff with specific questions on those off weeks. In fact, it would be something I think that would even kind of help further discussion and shape the discussion for that following week that we can address in our agenda item report, and then certainly address with the council of the whole, or the council as a whole prior to taking action.
2:00 AM, Saturday night. Doug, I have a question.
By all means, Doug, send it over.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to 5 ILCS 120, that's 2 C1, and 5 ILCS 122 C2, and 5 ILCS 122 C11. Can I get a motion?
We have a motion. Corey first. Do we have a second?
Mary Ellen?
A second.
Okay.
Roll call. Neemitz?
Yes.
Wrestler? Book? Holt Camp?
Yes.
Martins?
Yes.
Riddle? Garmer?
Yes.
Corey?
Yes.
That was my job. He told me, he told me how to do it, and he has something to say. My desk should be over there. Put my name in.